Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting of April 25th, 2024. On Zoom, we have Attorney Pat Conway, Major Banfield from DOC, Catherine Mann from the Sheriff's Department, Jude Gates. That's all you see right now on Zoom. I think others will probably pop in as we move along. Inside the room, we have Jason Smith, Director. We have Chuck Nickerson, Allison Kevacoski, Commissioner Godu, and myself, Ryan Chercello. Commissioner Coyle will not be here today, so she's excused. And we have Leila. Our admin is here as well. We also have a guest inside the room, former Commissioner Tom Tomberell. And we're going to start with an RFP opening.
I make a motion to award the proposal for elevator preventive maintenance repairs and New Hampshire State approved inspections to Embry elevator for an amount not to exceed $1,575 and for the stated rates for other work as may be assigned, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
And I would second that motion. And is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Make a motion to award the proposal for HVAC replacements, county nursing home and jail to KPMB Enterprises LLC for an amount not to exceed $3,845,000 and further move to amend the previously designated dollar amount to an additional $165,545 and reallocate that amount from the nonprofit subaward line as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
I'm second that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the April 11th, 2024 public meeting minutes.
Second that motion. Have you had a chance to review those?
I did.
Addition, subtraction, or anything to add?
They look good.
Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. On to payroll.
Make a motion to approve the payroll expense in the amount of $1,369,988.23 for the period ending April 20, 2024.
I will second that motion. Any discussion?
None.
Seeing none on the Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now, for the record, I just want to say that Kathy Stacey has joined us on Zoom. So I don't think anybody else knew. So I see the sheriff and Major Bashan, I believe, as well. So on to reports. Commissioner Godu, do you have anything?
No.
I don't have anything to update at this point either. The next up is a proclamation that I had asked Commissioner Godu within the honors of reading the proclamation.
So I move that we proclaim Rockingham County Animal Therapy Day. There are thousands of pet partners, therapy animal teams serving in communities across the United States. And whereas Pet Partners has designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day. And whereas scientific research shows that interacting with therapy animals can reduce stress, relieve depression, slow heart rate, lower blood pressure, and strengthen the immune system. And whereas animal therapy animals teams in the town of Portsmouth play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond. And whereas therapy animal teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, and those approaching end of life. And whereas these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need. And whereas we encourage more pet owners to consider becoming pet partners, volunteers to help our community by creating greater access to meaningful therapy animal visits. Now, therefore, I, Stephen Godu, Vice Chair of the County of Rockingham Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2024 as Rockingham County Therapy Animal Day and encourage our citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers. Further, I publicly salute the service of therapy animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation.
I will second.
Proclaimed and approved this 25th day of April 24th.
Thank you, Commissioner Godu, for reading me. Agenda here, moving on to Human Resources Exception Request 7.3.
I move to approve an exception request to Personnel Policy 7-3, new appointment rate for our county attorney's office employee JA as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
I will second that. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Exception Request, New Hire Benefits.
Make a motion to approve an exception request to Personnel Policy, New Hire Benefits Election Deadline for our Department of Corrections Employee AH as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I will vote yes to General Leave Long-Term Care.
Make a motion to approve a general leave request for an Environmental Services Employee LS with county portion of all benefits to continue for the period of April 1st, 2024 through June 2nd, 2024, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, discussion on the motion. Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Proposed Per Diem Licensed Care Partner Rate.
I make a motion to improve an hourly rate of pay for per diem licensed care partners of $22 per hour effective May 5th, 2024, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? I just have a quick question. Is this, this is an increase?
Yes.
For care partners?
Yes, it's for the per diem only.
Right. Well, how much, what was the, what was the rate prior?
I think it was 19 if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, all right. So for the discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Proposed Wage Adjustments?
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 budget wage adjustments for appropriate alignment for the county attorney's office, long-term care services, nursing department, and assisted living, and the sheriff's office as outlined in the Human Resources Memo dated April 25, 2024, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Finance.
Second the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Proposed Wage Adjustment Approval?
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 budget wage adjustment for the assisted living employee as outlined in the Human Resources Memo dated April 25, 2024, as recommended by the Human Resources Manager and Senior Director of Finance.
Second, discussion on the motion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ratification of the CBA Teamsters Local 633.
I make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the County of Rockingham, New Hampshire, and the Teamsters Local 633 of New Hampshire, representing the Rockingham County Legal Assistance 1, 2, and Paralegals, effective July 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2027, contingent upon approval of the cost items by the Rockingham County delegation.
Second the motion. Is there discussion on the motion?
I was part into negotiating it. I think that it was a fair deal, in good negotiations. I think both parties walked away not getting everything they wanted, so it was probably in in the right place. I support the agreement.
Okay. So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Restore Hyper Wellness Discussion. In the packet, we have something here, but I know Commissioner Godu had something that you wanted to bring up under that heading.
Yeah, this is a company who is offering a discount to our employees. And I suspect that that discount is probably available to more than just our employees and that it really is an opportunity for them to try to promote their business to our employees here at the county. I don't believe it's appropriate that we should do that for any business unless there's something really special and unique about the relationship between the county employees and the services that are being offered. It's a nominal discount. I mean, I support their, I'm sure they're good legitimate business. I just don't want to encourage this with other companies. We could get deluged with opportunities to offer discounts to our employees just as a means to get a company name in front of the employees. And I'm not in favor of it. There's no official proposal, but in general terms, I don't think it's a good policy for us.
Okay. How did this come in front of us?
We had an employee that has a family member that works there, and we have done others. Stratton Tire for years gave discounts to our employees, so we have done that before. So when I get these, I just bring them before the board to review and let me know whether we can advertise that as a discount. This person doesn't own the company. They work for the company, and so they just wanted to see if it'd be something. They're in our county as a business, and so that was to generate business and see if they wanted to do something for our employees.
Don't we also have like, for instance, like Cannibal Lake Park?
Yes, we do.
Will, will offer discounts to the county employees and whatnot?
We do, we do. That's more of the summer. We do it in the winter.
Yeah, yeah, different things, right?
Different things that come forward that I bring to the board for consideration, so.
Okay.
So do we have a list of discounts that the employees are being offered by this variety of companies?
Well, in the summertime, we always do it as a bulk spring/summer. We go out and we ask if anybody has discounts or something, we bring them in. Mostly it's a discount, but it's like the person purchases the tickets. We're just the bypass for them to purchase tickets. So it would be Water Country. There's a place in Candy. I forget the name of it. There is Water Country. This, you know, some of the ski places we do as well. They offer discounts and stuff like that. So this is just somebody who has a family member that knows of the county, and it's, you know, it's for infrared sauna, compression red light, some of those, you know, beauty type of things, type of things. So they wanted to just see if we wanted to offer something like that. So I don't, I don't advertise till I kind of bring it forward to the board to say it would be in a newsletter. We might post it somewhere, and then that would be it. But yeah, I understand your concern as well.
I don't object to a simple list of companies and the discounts that they may offer to the employees. I just don't want the county to be used as an advertising medium. They've supplied a flyer that I presume that they would want distributed, and that is probably what I object to the most. But if, I guess, any number of companies that we want to just list in a newsletter that Cannibal Lake Park or anyone else that is going to offer employees a discount, I don't, I don't object to letting employees know that. I just don't want to be an advertising source.
We also have Working Advantage, which is a large discount program that is national. They have different levels. We just offer the free service, but that's something we're looking into to offer a little bit different with a little charge to that, so that you can get discount tickets for airlines and hotels and restaurants and all sorts of other things nationally, which is a bigger one. This is more like a close, you know, more of a business that's out there that's trying to promote. So that was, that's why I brought it forward on the board.
Yeah. All right. So let's, let's move on to NH, I'm sorry, Long-Term Care Services. NH DHHS Healthcare License Application.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the 2024 healthcare facility license renewal application and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Care Services.
Second, discussion on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Rescind the Line Item Transfer Improvement that we made.
I make a motion to rescind the February 1st, 2024 approval of the line item transfer for medical nursing supplies to service contracts, so that the $150,000 of funds from the medical nursing supplies line that was part of that request can be instead utilized towards a proposed line item transfer request into the nursing staff line.
Second, discussion?
Just for explanation purposes, we were planning to send $150,000, to spend $150,000 out of this line that was excess amount for a I don't know what you call it, a, a proposed, Jason, what was that strategic plan? Strategic plan for advancement of the long-term care facilities. And we're in a budget crunch with salary staff line that's gone up significantly. And at this time, we prefer to contribute that money towards that staff line. I think that's the intention of this. I'm sure we'll do that strategic planning at another time, but right now we're in a bit of a budget crunch. Too many things have gone up, and I think that we kind of agree that it's more appropriate to spend the money there.
I, I, I agree on that. Also, you know, if the delegation wants, delegation typically gets $200,000 of contingency money. This was a proposal that was really started with them, a request from them. So if they so chose to spend some of that money, that contingency money on this, that's fine. Or we, we start an extra, like you mentioned. So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, Department Head Updates. I'm going to go, I'm going to go Kathy Stacey.
Good morning. Just a couple things. We had a large transaction this morning in Lunandary with Dartmouth Hitchcock, $10.5 million.
Woo!
Bought property, yeah. Nice. In the last week, we've had a 5.5 million, a 4 million, and a 3.6 million. Two of them in Lunandary, one in Fort Worth. So some, some big sales happening out there. The only other thing I'll tell you is that we are giving a tour today of my office to the senior group from Epping, New Hampshire. That's a little bit later this morning, and so they had given us a call, wanted to do a tour. And absolutely, anybody who wants a tour, we're happy to have them come over.
You didn't want to wait, you didn't want to wait till the new building? You didn't want to wait till the new building opened?
No, and it's funny because the, the one who pushed for it used to work for Pat, Karen Pollock.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so she's with this group, and they're always looking for something new to do, and
Oh, good.
They're coming over here, so it should be fun. It should be fun down there.
Very good, very good. And it looks like you're going to see a lot from Lunandary. That's the Woodmont Orchards, which is 603 acres. If you thought Tuscan Kitchen area was big, this is, this is actually larger, but it would probably take more time to build out, maybe like over a 15-year time period. But you'll start seeing a lot of that from Lunandary, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. I'm going to go to Jude Gates.
Good morning. All's well in facilities. There's not a lot new going on. There's still a lot going on. We did have a tour this week from some folks from Eversource. There were like a dozen of them. They were coming in my office like, like a clown car. But we ended up, we went out, we did a little bit of a walk up at the, the new construction site. They really wanted to see the biomass plant. It was a bunch of the line crew and their supervisors who don't ordinarily get to see happy customers that have everything that's working well. So I think it was a good experience for them. They did a lot of improvements to the lines over the years. Unfortunately, when we lose power, it's usually just a blip because they can feed the complex here either from 125 or from Route 27. So our reliability has gone way up in the last two, three years. And I think they appreciate the importance of the nursing home and the jail and the sheriff's department. So it was good for them to get some positive feedback, and it was fun for me to just kind of show off a little bit. So that was fun. The only other thing that was, that's a little bit different, yesterday I attended a, a meeting of the New Hampshire Emergency Drinking Water Interconnection Study. DES is with Underhood Engineering is looking at a sort of a regional, mostly Rockingham County, what happens the next time we have a drought, and what are the interconnection opportunities between the communities and large drinking water and small drinking water. It was interesting. I'm not sure that it has a lot of appeal to us. I almost think it would be like the olden days. We would be a donor community. But I'm following it. I just wanted to let you know that it was something else that was just another iron in the fire. Otherwise, all's well. Thank you.
Good, thanks, Jude. Major Banfield.
Good morning. Good morning. A couple things. We have the casting director from Lucky Eight here talking to the inmates for the, the upcoming show possibly, so that's exciting. We have two new employees who just started on Monday. So they still have three in the pike with two more interviews early next week. So I have four staff members, excuse me, graduating the Corrections Academy tomorrow. So I'll be up there speaking to them, so.
That's all we got. Thank you. Pat Conway, good to see you, Pat.
Morning. Business as usual here. We're busy, but I really don't have too much to report, so, but things are going well.
Okay, good. Thank you. Sheriff Neseos.
Morning.
Nice. Continue to be busy. Nothing really new to report. Have a great week.
Good. Jason Smith.
Good morning.
Morning.
This week, we began conducting interviews to hire for the three grant-funded positions for the pilot program to delay institutional care. So we continue to work through that the next few weeks coming up. We have transitioned residents from Driscoll 1 to open beds on other units. So Driscoll 1 is closed at this time until further notice. We have invited our pet therapy volunteers to visit the residents and take a group photo on Tuesday, April 30th at 2:00 PM, now that we have National Animal Therapy Day here, so excited for that. Health Proherited will be here next week to conduct a mock survey. And in addition to that, CMS has published new rules for staffing requirements. It's going to be a phased-out program for a period of three to five years, but starting May 20, May 2026. The federal requirement is to have a minimum of 3.48 hours per day per resident. So RN, it's 2.45, and then LNA is as well, also requiring an RN in the building 24 hours a day moving forward. I'm happy to say that we meet those requirements presently. Depending on staffing in the future and where staffing ends up, we may have to look at that very carefully. But I do monitor that on a daily basis to ensure we are compliant with staffing mandates.
Right.
Other than that, business as usual.
Very good. Thank you, Jason.
I have a question, Jason. Jason, that new staffing requirements, is that similar to what the president was proposing that we objected to?
Correct. It's, it's moving forward.
So it's moved, it's moved forward through CMS without any vote or approval of anyone?
Yeah, there's, it's, there's still discussion going on, but that came from the White House directly, that that will be moving forward. CMS will be developing a memo of understanding, and we'll be sending that out. But I have the communication from the White House on the announcement.
Yeah. And there's some pushback nationally as well.
Oh, there is.
Because of the nursing shortage.
Leading Age, the American Healthcare Association, and many other associations are, are not happy with this.
I mean, the idea, on, on the idea itself is a good idea, but in reality, we were all facing nursing shortage countrywide, and a lot of people are just saying it's just unreasonable to be putting these tools in. And you, as you mentioned, it's a three to five-year period to, to make adjustments, particularly rural counties.
So
They're going to have a hard time.
Rural will be a five-year, so they'll be concentrating on more urban areas, and then urban will have five years to comply. My concern is that it's, it's not taking into consideration home plans, and they're very much the core nursing team within long-term care.
Yeah. I just want to add one more quick thing on that same topic. So when we were in Washington for the NAGO, we toured with our federal partners, both senators, staffers, and also representative staffers, to let them know that we, we have issues with these rules, and all of them actually agreed with us. So our federal delegation heard from us that it was a one-size-fits-all, which is really impossible to do across the United States. It's just unreasonable. So they listened to us. So anyway, I wanted to share that. Let me go to Allison.
I've just been busy. I was busy preparing the third quarter meeting staff presentation and getting that over the show. I also was, we're getting prepped for our open enrollment. We reached out to Gallagher. We have to do some updates to our brain, what's called BrainShark, which is that voiceover that goes live, goes live on all of our platforms. And it, you know, it's a speaking engagement thing where they talk and let everybody know what the, what the plans are going to look like and stuff like that. So we've been doing that. I would like to seek just clarification on the exception request for the benefit selection deadline. I had denoted to approve it prospectively May 1st, 2024. I just want to make sure that's acceptable.
So you're going to talk about the motion you made already?
Yes, please.
On, let's see, which one is that, on the B?
It would have been, I'm not sure, it would have been B.
B?
Yes, thank you.
Exception Request, New Hire Benefits.
Yep.
Okay, and you want to make sure it
Like we've done in the past, it's prospective, or then we put in a first, 2024.
Do you have any questions on that, Commissioner Godu? Are you okay with that?
I'm fine with it.
All right.
I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. 100%. All the time you've been busy.
Of course. It's also, some couple of comments on Jason's thing. I think the report is only 19% of current facilities would meet the requirements that they, they put in.
Yeah.
So that's how little. But anyways.
Great.
I think what will happen, we'll continue to see nursing homes votes and elsewhere else be bought out by larger corporations. And it's a realization that, yes, they're expecting beds and states to support as far as increasing the number of nursing employees in the pipeline, and I think only 75 million, I believe CMS was going to dedicate towards that.
Yeah.
Towards, you know, incentives and education.
It would be, it would be nice if the White House came up with a plan to, to train more nurses.
Well, to me
And help us that way.
This is again, some, you know, feel-good proclamations without having the system already there to, to actually implement. But by my own, yeah, it's very, um, yeah. I would say busy with 2025 budgets, so the commissioners' one officially was mailed out. I'm truly able to do that. It's hard. Per update, third quarter review packets, like Allison said, so we had our piece of it too as far as not just the general fund review piece, but all the different various, you know, funds like service funds, capital fund, also the condition grants fund, and some other smaller special revenue funds. We, even though DHHS was still asking after the fact for additional follow-up data or information for the Oprah Debatement Trust Fund grant, we're still any day now going to get that $2 million because I've already seen the EFT notice from the state. So, so I think when Jason Henry gets back from vacation, we'll have to see where see where, um, where Prime Care is as far as providing some of the follow-up information that really they would know and be able to, to provide that D H S is actually asking for, but regardless, that two million is pending and, um, there should be a few of those, um, national O P O uh, settlements coming through at some point that the state should be receiving that the county in turn would get our fifteen, our share of the fifteen percent, which usually averages out to about seventeen percent of the fifteen percent, because it's kind of based on population.
Sounds like, yeah, sounds like a real estate commission.
In a way, I guess that's how it operates, based on population though.
Yeah.
But, um, and as you kind of mentioned, yes, this overall very busy with things, whether it's grants again, it's still the month, fall and quarter end. So, um, so whether it's, you know, JAG filing or it's, uh, or it's finals that already happened, because there's different due dates on things. So, tenth, fifteenth, thirtieth seem to be the primary due dates on things. So, uh, so there is an offer filed due for Tuesday as well, so I hope to have that done for tomorrow, so.
Alright, sounds like you got your hands full.
And subcommittee meetings have started up already. So Sheriff's was yesterday, as you well know, Commissioner, and we have more, uh, well, today is non-county specials. And there's more going on tomorrow, um, where I would be double booked. Um, obviously between Katie and Jesse, we'll still cover.
You have to cover, okay, great. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, Leila?
Yeah, actually.
Okay, good.
Uh, work continues on the websites. I did make a couple of liner adjustments, um, all of the subcommittee meetings and executive committee meetings on it. All twenty-three of them have been posted into the calendar on the website. Um, the commissioner's proposed budget has been also posted on the website and all hundred and thirty budget packets have been printed and mailed out, brought to the post office. Thank you to the finance officer for help printing those.
Wow.
Um, and a legal notice for the commissioner's public hearing on the second, we'll see in yesterday's meeting later.
Are we building the delegation budget? A supply? Never mind. Alright. I, I see everybody's laughing, so we'll just bypass that right now. Uh, I just wanna, uh, just take a quick opportunity to thank, uh, all the department heads and everybody, um, that helped with the budget. This was probably, it was a tough budget, probably the toughest that I, I've seen here since I've been here. Um, and really happy the fact that, that people stepped up to make it work. Um, and, um, you know, I, I, I really think that the teamwork here is great, so thank you very much. It's a good budget, I believe. Um, you know, we're not passing, I think we're passing on one point eight million dollars to the taxpayers. Um, last year was one point five, um, but still, if you look at the history of, of what we've passed on to the taxpayers, it's, it's really, it's been low. While inflation's been high. So thank you, everybody, that, that helped us, uh, make the numbers work. And, uh, that's all I wanted to say, um.
I just add to that, that, uh, it, yes, it's the best budget we could come up with. Uh, again, not as lean as we would like it to be, but, uh, I think it's right for the times, given the inflation rates, and I too am impressed with the cooperative nature of the different department heads and, um, sharing expenses and transferring money from an unused account to uh, accounts that need the extra cash right now in the budget. It, it's a we have outstanding department heads and I'm proud to be part of this county administration.
Good. Um, so I guess I'm gonna take that as new business that we just brought up.
Yeah.
But is there any other new business? Um, seeing that, I'm going to go to public comment. We have one member of the public here. I don't know if you'd like to say something?
Yeah. I may, I, I just said I got here about quarter past seven and I pulled over with my coffee and took a look at the new building and the workers pulling in with all their pickup trucks and deliveries and it's really exciting. And last week, uh, obviously you guys know that I'll be running for election
Yeah.
uh, in District Three, and I was in front of a booth that arranged, and it's shocking to know, the first question they obviously asked is, what is the county commissioner? So I had to kind of, uh, explain to them what we all do, but, you know, they're amazed. And I went from one department where the B, the county attorney's officer, Kathy, the sheriff, well, I went through every department, told them what you folks are doing and what I did while I was here for ten years. They're in shock. The public really doesn't know what happens on this property. They really don't know that. They're really weak on education on council business, so. I'm on a worldwide tour trying to teach them, but, uh, you guys are doing a fantastic job. And I've been following the budget, it's a tough budget and I kept saying, I remember when Maureen Barrows, when I got elected in two thousand twelve, it made seventy-eight million dollars was the budget, and it looks like you guys are approaching a hundred million, or at least I hope to be here when it gets to be a hundred million, but, uh, the money is well spent. The people were shocked and amazed that you have what you folks are doing.
Yeah.
I come here and sit here and watch it, think I was proud of this and you guys all work and you should all be proud. I should drive out of this lot and be real proud of it, you know?
Thanks.
Thank you for allowing me to come in.
Yeah, oh, anytime. It's my pleasure. Um, I, I do want to say something that I, being in politics for a long period of time, sometimes when things go right, people are comfortable and they don't think about it. So with the county being like the smallest portion of your tax bill, you know what I'm saying? Typically, when they're happy, you know they're happy because they don't chime in as much. So that, I take that as a good sign as well. Thank you very much for sharing the story.
Really excited about, you know, like explaining the building and all the awful money and like you guys allocated it and you know, told them hopefully the end of two thousand twenty-five we got in a ribbon. I only had one woman that was really upset about the solar. I was yelling, I couldn't get her to stop yelling at me, but she, just, you know, some people don't like Volkswagen. Well, this lady doesn't like solar. She picked on me for an hour, for an hour, but I won her over at the end, so.
Okay, did you talk about the savings?
Yeah.
That, that.
She wanted wind with turbines out there.
Wind turbines?
That's what she wanted.
As worse.
That's left efficient.
Yeah, thanks, thanks again for sharing that story and, but I, you're, you've been a big part of the success over the years too, so, um, I'm glad that you're running again. I wish you the best. Um, so, we're going to move into a non-public at this point in time?
I make a motion that we enter non-public session per New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, section two A personnel.
I'll second that, um, motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. We'll be going non-public. We're gonna take a couple in a break before that, but, uh, thank you, everybody. Appreciate everybody's hard work and, uh, we'll talk soon. Okay, folks, we hit the amount of non-public, um, and Commissioner Godu has a motion to read.
Uh, I motion that we seal the non-public minutes indefinitely because it is determined that the divulgance of this information likely would affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, I'll take another motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. And seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
We adjourn.
Thanks for, um, um, coming on board for the non-